All right, I'll call this meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America, and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion by Glenn Henry.
I'll second.
And a second by Joy McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. All right, uh, community comment? Is there anyone here for community comment this evening? All right, moving right along to presentations and reports. Item five point one, the water treatment plant update. Mr. Lannis?
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council here. I know some of you just got a little bit of an update in the last hour or two. So, I'm just gonna keep this fairly high level and try and open it up for some questions. I know some of you might have a few things that you wanna ask and get out there. But overall, we're continuing the commissioning process here. There's gonna be some things coming online in the coming weeks. We're getting very close to fully, fully online, fully operational, and really just talking about restoration on the outside of the facility. So, we're within, you know, probably a month of starting to see the outside come together. The inside is gonna be just wrapping up some of the details, getting the filters and the wells and everything all synced up together here to the point where this is gonna be the way it operates for the next decade. So, we're getting very close there. And so, related to the update, obviously, there's the what went on the last couple of weeks where we experienced some pressure, pressure surges here throughout the, throughout parts of the city. There's some standing claims that are, that are being reviewed and are coming up with some claims processing mechanisms for the people that experience some pressures that are above normal, have a means to, to, you know, address, address the claim and have a, have a process. So, we're trying to go, you know, individual by individual. I have, I have a person to call. Michael Jabs from our end has been kind of a go-to person that has gone out to certain homes and taken a look at some of the circumstances and are trying to offer consistent guided advice. We have the league involved. So, the gist of it is, you know, we've had, we had some, some startup challenges, some broken, broken valves that really were probably the most significant contributor to an extended duration of high pressures. You know, we had, if it could, if it gets down to the nuts and bolts of it, I can say I believe I know what occurred. Um, and at this point, we're pretty certain about most things, but, you know, there's certain things that I can't untangle a hundred percent. Other than the fact on Sunday when we had some challenges, we did, we did, uh, with, with most, most probable certainty here, uh, have a pumping operation was against a closed valve. That was quickly rectified here, probably about eleven in the morning. Uh, we got to the point where we were recognizing that that was, that was a closed valve that needed to be opened, opened it up. Uh, but really what caused the extended issues was the fact that we had a valve between the two zones that that morning broke in an open position. That honestly is where everything continued through the week. Uh, we would've been probably done at eleven thirty in the morning on Sunday without, this valve is still closed and needed to be opened. They opened it. At that point, we, everybody would've went home and it would've been done. But because we had another valve that was, you know, an older butterfly valve between the two zones, however, that cracked open, whether it was broken that morning or if the pressures from the, you know, different operations that were happening that morning, uh, popped the valve open, it could not be reclosed. And for that reason, we had, we had a open connection between the high zone and the middle zone for the better part of that week. And so, we have, we have a number of claims that were actually coming in during the week. And we flat out, we're not able to, to get that sealed off until we could replace the valve and, and come up with some redundancies to, to shut it off. So, there's multiple interconnects in the system, and so, a lot of troubleshooting was going on to identify it. But that ultimately was the, uh, the biggest contributor to an extended duration in which we had higher pressures in the, in the middle zone for that week. Is, once that valve broke open, it was, it was not gonna be fixed till we dug up the correct valve. And just for some perspective, there's multiple connection points throughout the city. And, you know, we, we obviously wouldn't take a backhoe and just start digging up ones to try them. We really had to get to the point where this is, you know, reasonable certainty that this is where we would dig. So, there's a lot of things happening, but that was the, that was the cause of the extended duration, uh, high pressures. We had, again, some momentary issues with the pumping against the closed valve. That was quickly rectified in the morning and, and opened up. At this point, what we can say is the valve, or the, the valving and records from oh five and, and the early two thousands when, when this was built, were not quite up to par as far as explaining the valving and how, how that system was put together to the degree that it was quite inaccurate. And that was a significant factor in troubleshooting and in other directions because, you know, one thing was assumed as far as valving and another thing was happening. And so, that, that is kind of a case in point where for, for us, the significance of good records is absolutely tremendous. The operators need, need good records to know what to turn because if they think they're turning one thing and it's doing something else, it, it puts everybody in a state of confusion because, you know, you're, you're troubleshooting something that doesn't, isn't thought to be the case. And so, that was a challenge. There's a huge need to update those records. And, and we, by the time we're, we're done here with all the, all the troubleshooting that we've, we've, you know, uh, completed over the last couple of weeks, we're gonna have very, very good records that are gonna have little, little, we'll say, operational diagrams for operators that are coming in that are new. So, it'll be, kinda go from, uh, challenging and inaccurate to more of the top-of-the-line set of records for, for the city. So, um, that's, that's the circumstances with the, the high pressures. It's a stable system now. I mean, at this point, I would, I would just offer the plant as just getting ready to be run for the next decade. So, I think I can say we're over the hump on that. Couple other things that, that are of relevance here is we do some claims process going on with the league. So, we're trying to give the homeowners the best advice possible to, for their best position to get any of these, any damages reimbursed. There's about fifty claims with a vast majority of them are fairly small. Um, there are, you know, relief valves that may have popped, didn't reset properly, and they had to plumber reinstall them. There, most of them are below a thousand dollars and the numbers have averaged up simply because of one larger claim. That wasn't that relief valve, it was a connection to a refrigerator that failed. And so, that's got into some flooring and things to that nature. That's the only large one. Most of them are fairly, fairly, uh, small, uh, and, you know, relatively easily remedied. And so, that's, that's the situation where we're trying to make it as painless as possible for these folks that did experience some challenges. I know it's been hard for a lot of residents to say what's going on, but, um, I can say the biggest thing for that week was, was a broken valve that we couldn't, couldn't quite get sealed back up again. Um, otherwise, again, I can tell you, Sunday at eleven o'clock, it would've been, it would've been a done deal had that not broken open. Um, and then lastly, there's a couple of things that are gonna be improvement suggestions that came out of this as well. There's a couple of homes that are in higher pressures that were, you know, were basically getting to the bottom of the fact that they're right on the verge of where they should be for, for pressures for, for a home. And, and there, there might be some follow-up. Again, that's gonna be, might be because we like to come up with some definitions to, when it's appropriate and when it's not, some thresholds. But some homes might, might end up with a, a pressure-reducing valve on their independent service. And that's gonna be some, you know, just engineered guidance. If you're above this level, then you qualify. And we'll have some recommendations on that in which that would be installed very similar to, say, a water, water meter.
So, would that pressure-reducing valve then become the responsibility of the homeowner? Does it remain the responsibility of the city?
Uh, you know, I, I think we'd, we'd talk a little bit more with, with Chad about that, but it, it would be probably a city-owned, uh, but that's a little gray for me at the moment because new code requires pressure-reducing valves in a lot of the newer homes. They're putting them in at a certain threshold right now. That may not have been code ten years ago. And so, some of these that don't have them, uh, you know, we'll have to think about what's, what's the appropriate, um, what's the appropriate threshold for, you know, city-owned versus we are retrofitting you based on these circumstances, but it's your infrastructure.
So, where does that pressure-reducing valve connect then? Is it at the street or is it in the home?
In the home. It'd be right before, usually it's right before the meter or something to that, you know, nature. But it's usually in the, in the utility room.
Okay.
So, more to come on that. Again, we, we wanna say here's the threshold. This is justified, so. Um, but that is, that is it. I know I wanted to leave some time for questions, so.
Questions?
I'm good.
I'm good. Um, you kind of explained the process for finding that broken valve, but it was a little bit finding a needle in a haystack, right? Where that was why it took the amount of time it did? Or were we waiting for the piece to replace it?
Um, well, there's, there's two, two things here. I mean, we, we had to check all the different connection points. And, you know, the, it, it took a fair amount of time because, in all honesty, until we knew that it was broken, all indications were, we thought that valve was closed. So, there, there wasn't exactly this big glaring red flag that said, well, this valve is open. It's been shut for a decade. And so, we're trying to think of all the different ways you could have an interconnect here when you have a valve that has been shut for a decade is now, is now, uh, you know, wide open. And we're comparing that against a failed PRV connection that can let water through from the high to the low zone, or other, other locations that might've, might've burst. I mean, and then, then it came down to troubleshooting is which valve was the interconnect. And for, for, uh, you know, for a while, there, there was some confusion over which valve actually was the interconnect valve. There was, there was thought by some of the prior, uh, I know Chad's done a lot of homework. I think he was, he was reaching out to everybody as well, that there, there was a thought that one of the other valves in that area was the actual interconnect not to be touched. So, it was a matter of figuring out, hey, which is the right one? And then verifying, all right, well, this is, this is why we would, believe this is the one that failed, then dig it up. And so, we, we were getting pretty close. On Tuesday, we got to the point of saying, we're gonna put in, these are the two lines it could be. We're gonna put in new valves on both lines. And so, we were at that point on Tuesday, but we were able to isolate a few things to get it at a calm, you know, a calm place where we felt like we could take another day of overtopping Tower One. Cause which was the only, only risk. We had, we'd had the system stabilized for water supply throughout the week, but it was, it was a matter of, uh, it was a matter of the overtopping was probably the most visible concern. But, you know, we, we felt like one more day, we'd, we'd have it licked as to which one it was, and that ended up being the one.
And then you talked about keeping the records updated. Um, and I, I appreciate that so that hopefully we never have to go through this again. But what does that look like? We just went through a whole presentation, the work session about these online records. Is that something that we're keeping track of with the SCADA software? Is there a different software for that?
Yeah, uh, it's the, it's the GIS. Geographic Information Systems where, where your, your water system, your sanitary sewer and storm sewer are all kept online. So, you, you can pull that up online and it shows the pipe networks and valve locations, and that gets pulled in from more detailed record drawings. And so, the GIS is where all that is kept. And if, if we, for example, pull up the GIS, until we can verify something from two thousand ten is wrong, that's, that's the record that, that we, we work from. And, and, and in the, in the case like this, when you have a pipe in a diagram where a pipe comes here to here and T is in, we have no way to know that's wrong until something like this happens. And we, we added some indications that the pipe was coming in outside of a valve and it was on the other side of the valve. So, from the, some of the diagrams, it didn't even look like there was a valve to Tower Two. So, I mean, it, that was what, where staff was working from. So, we had to, A, verify that was not true, then verify that it was this valve, which also was not shown in the right location. And, and all of that had to tie together in a very, very quick amount of time to try and sort through this. And so, what we would be doing is updating the GIS as a matter, at a minimum, but then creating a couple of operating diagrams for the operation staff so that we've got the valves numbered and the type of valve and, and ultimately what it operates, what it controls. And then they can flip through a couple-page manual that says, all right, for, for these operations, here's your critical areas. If this one breaks, here's the different ways you can isolate the main. Just, just some very quick, sensitive, uh, you know, uh, location-sensitive operations. The most of the system is fairly straightforward, and most of the system is not this far off. But this one around the plant was very, very critical. And all the interconnect locations were, are between the zones. We're gonna make sure that that's pretty, pretty well-understood.
Um, last question. When will the plant be a hundred percent online? I guess before going through this process, I erroneously thought that it was gonna be like flip a switch and the plant comes online. But I'm learning it's a process and we're at a certain percentage right now. But when will it be a hundred percent?
Yeah, I mean, Chad, you can chime in on that too. But I mean, I would, I would say we're, we got a little bit setback by the wells. Uh, that was, that, that was slower than planned. And then, you know, we've also had any number of, uh, the environment right now, everything takes on triple the amount of time to get materials and such. So, we, we wanted to have it online in June a hundred percent. So, we're, we're lagging a little bit on that for, you know, any number of the market reasons. But I would say, I mean, I would say we're within, you know, four weeks. Uh, and then at that point, there's gonna be little stuff tweaks, you know, uh, things to that nature that are gonna be happening until the fall, but you'd have a fully, fully functional site. So, thoughts?
Yeah, we're, we're running it at about seventy-five percent right now. It's the one filter and then just some minor, minor tweaks and adjustments that we'll have to do to get it fully operational.
Okay, great. Thank you. Right? Thank you for the update. Appreciate it. Um, all right, onto the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Councilmember Mock.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Henry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. All right, um, eight point one, business items, the Preserve final plat. Mr. Schmidt?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am going to bring up a presentation I have for tonight.
Very suspenseful.
Tonight? Yeah. I know the suspense is killing all of us. Okay. There we go. Okay. So, um, just so everybody knows, tonight, there, I added one slide from the packet version that was released on Friday. So, that was updated this afternoon at, you know, three, four o'clock. So, you might, I'll point it out when we get to that spot, but there's one slide that's a little bit different. This is the final plat for Carver Preserve. This is a forty-acre development that's just west of Meridian Fields, um, on the south side of Highway two twelve and just to the north of the Timber Creek Development, shown here in red. Uh, final plat, this is the last step here in the planning, um, city council process. So, this, this process started here back in August of last year when the Planning Commission saw the preliminary plat and did the rezoning public hearing for the, for the project. Um, this went through the city council then in September of last year. Uh, Planning Commission saw the final plat in June of this year. And here we are tonight for city council to review the final plat, um, the rezoning, and then authorizing execution of the development agreement. So, um, the, the key things to note here are generally what you look at for the final plat is making sure that things are consistent from a configuration perspective with the preliminary plat. You know, making sure that the site isn't completely configured differently. There isn't, you know, fifteen more homes than there was the first time you saw it. So, we can say that the configuration has not changed since the preliminary plat, which is a very big box that needs to be checked. Um, since that time though, we worked through all the details with the final construction plans. So, um, getting down to all the details of the, the final sewer and water, um, routing, storm sewer configurations, all that stuff. That's all been worked through at this point. Um, and we're, we're at the end of the road where, um, the final plat is before us and the developers' agreement is also, um, on the, on the plate tonight for review and approval. Uh, the details of the development itself, uh, this, this is comprised of sixty-six, uh, single-family homes. So, it's R two zoning district. A couple of unique things or special things I wanted to point out was pedestrian connectivity. We'll look at, we'll look at these things in subsequent slides. Um, there's a wetland trail system that goes along. Um, there's a major wetland complex in the middle of the site, so a very nice feature there. Uh, obviously sidewalk connectivity along all the streets. Uh, this development, its primary access is serviced off of Monroe Drive, which is currently being paved probably as we speak today. Um, it was, it was paved, so that's, that's good. That extension is now there, so, um, they can get to the site. Uh, another big thing, trunk sewer and water extensions. Um, as you'll see, um, in the council memo, there's quite a bit of oversizing costs for trunk sewer and water facilities. Uh, the sewer system that's being extended, um, to the northerly edge of the development will ultimately go under two twelve and service the whole service area north of, of two twelve in the future growth area. So, that's a twenty-seven-inch trunk sewer main, so very big sewer extension. Also, a twelve-inch water main extension, which will connect into the water main that we, um, we board under two twelve as part of the, the water system project a couple of years ago. So, that connection will be completed, which will be good to have. Um, one item that I wanted to talk to, this was the add, added item in the, in the packet this afternoon, was Highway two twelve access closure. I'll get into that in a little bit here. Um, MPCA required Birmingham landscaping on the north side of the development. There was a noise study that was completed in the preliminary plat process, and that required that there is some noise barriers installed with the development, so that's all in here. Uh, then lastly, I know the council's interested in park dedication. Uh, the primary way that was achieved was fees in lieu of park land itself. Um, there was some credit given for the, the trail system, the wetland trail system along the wetlands. So, but the primary was, I think it was about two hundred and six thousand in, in, uh, fees for that, so. So, here's a picture of the development itself. It's basically a loop road. Um, the easterly, um, side of the development connects to Monroe Drive. That's, that's in place today. And then ultimately, when phase two of Timber Creek is, is developed, um, the second connection point will be, would, would terminate again at Monroe Drive. So, uh, there's also a cul-de-sac, uh, street on the east side of the development. Uh, so I mentioned pedestrian connectivity. So, the green denotes the sidewalk, uh, sidewalk system within the development. And then the orange or the brown is the trail system I, I mentioned that goes around the wetland complex, which you'll see is, takes up a good portion of the middle of the site. Uh, Monroe Drive, so just mentioned that. Again, this is the, the connection point that'll be in place today with the future one coming in, in phase two of Timber Creek. Okay, so this is the new slide that many of you might not have seen yet. Um, so through the, through the final plating process, uh, we've been, we've been working with MinDOT, who's currently working on the two twelve expansion project. And it has been their desire to, to close this access point at Highway two twelve. They wanna try to limit the number of access points on that roadway, which meets the goals of a, of an expressway system that they're installing, you know, from Carver to the west. Um, that's something that wasn't possible before this development happened because you'd be taking away, um, residence-only access point. So, there's, there's a handful of residents that live in Dalgrin Township right now that this is the only way they can access their property. So, with the Preserve now providing a, a connection point, um, this access can be closed, okay? So, what would happen is this gravel frontage road system that services those handful of residents, they would use the, the city street system in the Preserve property to access their, access their homes. Um, another reason why thi, this should be closed is with the Meridians Field Development, Timber Creek Preserve, and everything going to the west, this could act like another, basically an on-and-off point that people would use as kind of a back route to the expressway system. So, this could actually see quite a bit of traffic. So, it does, it does make sense from a, a traffic engineering perspective that, that should get, that should get closed, so. Um, the developer is going to provide this connection outside of our platted limits, and then the city would reimburse the developer for that cost associated with those improvements. So, that is the change that we added to the, the council resu, resolution for the final plat and will also be clarified in the developers' agreement too.
So, do, I'm sorry, just while we're there, those homes still remain in Dalgrin Township, right?
Correct.
So, why is the city paying for the access?
The city's paying for that access because it's outside of the, of the platted area. So, we can't, we can't make the developer pay for access that's, that's not, you know, it doesn't have any benefit to them.
Then why is that? And it's the city that's closing off the access to two twelve?
MinDOT would, MinDOT is closing the access, or they wouldn't, they wouldn't provide a turn lane off of two twelve with that expansion project. So, Dan, you wanna add to that?
I get the danger of having everybody in Carver, or everybody in kind of Northwestern Carver, thinking that that would be a really great way to bypass a lot of traffic. But it, it's not sitting well with me that the city pays for that.
I'll just chime in and, and say that was the initial line of thinking here. The request was, MinDOT, you, if you would close the access, um, you would pay for it. Here's, here's where you get into the bureaucracy of, of, you know, the state and, and, uh, you know, funding what they can and can't fund. And so, what we have going on here is that access is currently in their plan. It was bid that way. They would put that access in because those are the, those were the conditions that they, they bidded under. And so, the Preserve is a bit of a changed condition that offered an opportunity to think about this. And I would say it's more of an, more, less of an opportunity, more of a need. Cause if we did nothing, that access would be there, the Preserve would tie to it, and that would be a mini interchange. And so, it, it would, it wouldn't work very well. It, it would be a slip ramp for a thousand people. And so, we, we, we were gonna have to do with the Preserve, which we were prepared to do, is barricade that. We would've barricaded it off, completely isolated the Preserve from tho, those five residents, and they can't go that, they can't go through the barricades to the south. Nobody from the, the Preserve or any residents down there can go to the north and hit that access. That's what we would've done if they kept it open. But the, the state was saying, all right, well, we'd like to close it. What can you help us get this done? Cause I think this, this is mutually agreed upon, probably this is the, this is the twenty-year outcome here that everyone would be, uh, looking at here. This is ultimately gonna close at some point, and this is gonna be the, the need. And so, they're saying, well, we can't find a way to put money from a state trunk highway contract to local roads. So, it had this vacuum of, well, there's this little gap in here to actually cover this. And so, that's ultimately where it came down to the, the state approaching the city as well. We'll, we'll, uh, uh, close this. Uh, can you bridge the gap with your development? There's a small br, gap between the developer and, uh, and ultimately the, that T up there that isn't, either, it would be Township. And I can assure you that, that, you know, you, you know the Township's finances, that, you know, potholing is an expensive endeavor to approve. So, it really fell down, it fell to the city or, that's not known. So, Brent, you can speak further to that if you'd like.
Yeah, so part of this is, you know, we didn't have time to get to the city manager's update, but you, I sent out, uh, some correspondence. So, part of the, to close the gap, the city had been told earlier that the state would not support, uh, side on the two twelve bridge railing. And so, um, the city said they would propose to the council to take on the, um, this connection, the part that we would be responsible for, um, if the state would support our two twelve bridge railing application. So, you'll see that rendering in the city manager's, uh, update. So, it is a, when Dan said bureaucracy, it is a kind of convoluted path to get there, no pun intended.
I guess I didn't understand that we're agreeing to pay for the house. I guess I didn't understand that we're agreeing to pay for the city road. What is the road gonna look like? A paved road through there? Is it gonna be gravel road?
What we had before, which what was in the development, was a, was a driveway to the well. That was, and that was it. The, the difference between, you know, between that, which is, we'd probably uh ta- take five public, you know, residences and, and put it on a street that would be, intended to be a city public street. So we're gonna widen it out a little bit from a driveway to, to probably a twenty-four foot minimal, minimal width roadway, uh, probably uh, just gravel shoulders. So it's still gonna be a, a rural paved, yeah, so paved rural, and that's, that's because we don't want tracking. Uh, the, I think the issue is, is if we got a gravel roadway there, they're gonna track gravel onto the city street, and so we're trying to have a little bit of a runout, uh, where, where the, the gravel, the gravel stays on that, just that little segment of road, that we're, we're gonna really consider a glorified driveway. So we're gonna turn it from a, a very small, minimal driveway to-
We would like to turn it from.
Yeah, well, no, no, yeah, yeah, no, that's absolutely true. This is, that's subject to the approval.
So-
Um, so what we would do.
The road is going to the city's property that houses, or the, where the well is, and then two residents? Is that?
Yeah, it's, oh, it's five.
The house sits above Meridian Curve. Is there another outlet past that? Or do they have to come down and through Field Drive and around to get to their residence?
They'll have to go through the preserve to get to that property, to the east.
So they'll come, okay, so they'll have to come through Field Drive Town Road, whereas it's marked on this map to get-
Well, what they'll do is they'll take Monroe Drive and then go up.
Okay.
They'll go to the north.
I have comments when you're done. Um, why don't you go, I'm still-
Okay, so, last time I heard, the state had nine billion dollars of surplus, and I'm not sure how they reallocate money. So I guess it's a little stingy for me to say MINDOT doesn't wanna pay for this, but, but they'd like us to pay for it. So now we're horse trading with them for support on getting the two twelve or the-
Sign.
Sign?
That's what's proposed.
Right.
But-
There's no guarantees on that? That's just asking for support, or?
The, Dan is working on an application for that, permit for that. You know, ultimately, kind of beyond what we talked about, you know, the county highway department and the city have talked about this for probably the last year, cause the county's been pushing this as a means to uh, two twelve will become a, a better fundable project for an expansion, for i.e. the um, a future interchange at County Road forty-three, the less drive-on traffic it has from roads like this. And so it's ultimately in the city's best interest to um, take this on. Now, you could just say, well, we're just gonna uh pave to uh the wellhouse as planned, and then leave the rest gravel. I just, um, you know, I pushed the team to extend that blacktop because from a maintenance perspective, and you think about garbage trucks, delivery trucks, uh, driving through that.
Is it gravel right now?
Correct.
All that's gravel.
Do we intend to clean it too?
Ultimately, the city's orderly annexation agreement calls for whenever it's one-side city, one-side township, that the city maintains. So we're, we're already maintaining this, and so um, I would say, bridge railing aside, this is a, would be a good investment by the city just for, cause the future betterment of two twelve benefits the city by, you know, that eventually getting it, the, an interchange to forty-three and opening up our, our network for uh development opportunities. Now, does it um, um, balance out with the investment you're making now in the near term? You know, that's for the council to decide. Uh, but there's some definite um betterments that the city gets out of this in the long term. It's just a matter of how much do you wanna invest into it now, and, and what that kind of pain point or threshold is for a good decision for you.
So I have a question then. The parcel that's above where the Meridian Curve, where it is, so technically that is city, so are we maintaining that entire gravel road now? Because that's against, that's partially township and partially us?
Where, yeah, chat, the public services team is already plowing that east-west road.
The one that has the red arrow going across, all the way to that old house?
Correct.
The flag house, or something that is?
Correct.
So you ma- we maintain that?
Correct.
Okay. Um, on the left-hand side of the preserve, is that what I'll call, is that John Lenzin's driveway? Are we that far?
Correct.
Okay, so how does that work for that then? Because they use that to come in to get to-
They would use the preserve.
So they would have to come down eleven now, go up through, and then?
Monroe.
How do they connect through the preserve at the bottom?
So this, this road here, this Tamrec Road comes up where it says Town Road now, and then it loops down, you know, and does the upside-down U. The picture on the right shows where this road would, would tee into Tamrec, right here.
Aaron, can you show the, the final plat so they can see the, or the, the street drawing for the preserve, so they can see that? There, that's probably a better drawing.
Yeah, right, so we're talking about the area right here.
Yep, that's not what I'm asking right now, though. So the one on the bottom, that's the one that will connect over to John Lenzin's area, or not?
Right, or left corner.
Left corner.
Okay.
Monroe Drive ends at the, at the, at his property line.
Okay.
Will he have access to that from Monroe Drive?
No, not planned at this time.
So we're only paving the north-south section of that, not the east-west?
Correct.
It's just a short extension past the well. It's just a little bit more paving runout. This is about the gist of it. But again, we, to your, to your point, uh, uh, Christie, this is all what we're talking about. Uh, again, what we had in the plan, there's a driveway to the well, which is in an appropriate need, needs, needs access. So that would be there. It would be, if this were to proceed, we'd have to come up with a pavement length and mechanism to do these things. And ultimately, we'd be coordinating with the state for uh closure of that access and all that would have to sync up. They'd have to go out there and reach out to residents and explain these things. There's some things that would have to happen after this. But we're, we're kind of at the point where we had to make a call and are preserving this, this path.
And normally, we'd like to have this teed up a little bit better. We just got word from MINDOT, and so this is why you're kinda getting it on the fly. We certainly have the opportunity to say, nope, we're gonna, we're not gonna facilitate this. I mean, it, and there were, you know, I, I gave uh Jeff Thompson with the Dalgrin Township Board a heads-up on this, this, late this afternoon, when we knew this was gonna come together. Um, you know, the, the county and MINDOT would be responsible for notifying these residents of this change in access, cause we're not shutting down the access to two twelve, they are, and, and however they choose to communicate with them. But the city's not gonna take calls on, you know, access for the Dalgrin Township residents. And to whatever degree they would, so, you know, oppose or support this type of change.
So MINDOT's not willing to do any kind of a deal to pay for any of this. They wanna close, which they've always wanted that closed, but they're not willing to do anything.
They're not, they don't have the, the fight, the means within their project scope to fund this.
Um, mechanism is how I'd put it.
Yeah.
They just, they just, they've got, again, the rules, tape processes that just are, yeah, understandable.
I just need clarification. We are not paving anything east to west or parallel to, to twelve, correct?
Correct.
So the three properties, well, there'll be four acts, or four or five people that will be accessing from the frontage road. It'll be um, that one is Tadson. I'm not sure the, the middle one is, and then the Hammers, and then the Lenzin, and then there's a couple more down the way, right? But they will all be accessing through Town Line Road, correct?
Correct.
The access that we're going to pave, is that approximately a hundred yards?
Probably shorter than that. I mean, we're-
There's a-
About that, yeah.
There's a diagram in, in the packet that shows more detail, and I think it shows the driveway of the well.
Yeah.
And so when you said, we just wanna expand the driveway to Tamrec Road.
Joy, can I interrupt you and ask you one, Pedro?
I am on, hold on, I have to zoom out. Um, I'm on twenty-two, thank you, of the packet, or twenty-one. In that upper right corner, cause I see a dark shade there, and I think that that's the driveway. So you're just saying, connect the end of that driveway down into Tamrec Road? That's the only paving, cause the rest of the road exists to the north of that driveway to the well?
Yeah, and with some flexibility built into that, there's nothing magic to that. It's just to the T is the the thinking.
Right, okay. So would we pave all the way up to the east-west road, or just from where the existing driveway is?
Um, well, probably, probably to the east-west road. Uh, that being said, again, you know, flexibility-
Okay.
Exists.
Okay. Do you guys see what I'm, I, I see?
No.
I do, Chris, I'm sorry.
Bear, bear with me, I, I'm pulling this up. The, I think I have a picture that might show it a little bit better.
So we're already gonna pave about a third to half of the way?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
So we're just looking at fifty yards of asphalt. Are we putting curb and gutter into?
We're all, it was the thinking. We're all was the thinking. Like, again, previously, it was just a driveway for the prior plan.
And also widening it?
Oh, that's helpful.
Widen it for two-year traffic, yeah.
Well, as long as we're on the, talking about accesses, um, I need a smaller, on the west side of the preserve property, the midway point, there is a outlot, or two outlots, and between them looks like there's-
Yeah, I can move over.
Yeah, from Tamrec Road there. Um, you're close, you're close.
Yeah, it's south of Outlot.
Yeah, right there.
Yep.
What are the chances that, that can be used for access to um, the Lenzin property and then up to the ha- up to the Hammers, up to the um, the frontage road? See what I'm saying?
That might be a private driveway, though. I don't know that for sure.
Valid, okay. That answers it.
Might be his driveway.
So, yeah. So could he use that as a entrance to his driveway?
We, in that particular case, as, as his property could not touch that, so he would have to take the initiative to go make that connection on his own.
Okay.
And we'd have to permit it. That's how I believe that would have to happen.
Got it. Just asking the question. So the reality is-
It's fair thought.
We're looking at seventy-five yards of asphalt, um, no curb gutter or anything else, just, and they're shutting down the road. Ballpark me thirty grand, forty thousand?
Probably a bit less than that. I mean, what are we thinking?
We've been thinking twenty to thirty.
Yeah, alright. That answers my questions.
So if we were to move forward as this is presented with that closure, does the township, do you have to get any approvals with township because, or any other agency because we are technically shutting off that and people are not gonna have the same access? Do they, is there any red tape there?
State should.
I, I believe so, yes, and I believe it'd be on the, on the uh, the shoulder of the agency that is doing the closure.
Okay.
Um, I mean, I think we're coordinating with the develop, uh, the developer and the township to the degree that they, this isn't a surprise to them. The closure, we would defer to the state to say, if you're gonna do this, you, you know, this, you're gonna be on your own to communicate, residents, the township, and, you know, it's, I believe, yes, that's a very applicable item.
So if we're going to fund this, where's the funding?
It would come from the special capital fund.
And we just made, what else, what else did we have that was just coming out of that that was big?
Carver Bluffs Parkway.
Okay, so then what, what is our balance going to be in that?
When do? Like four hundred some thousand?
Okay. Do we have anything that we are foreseeing in the future that that is going in there? I know we've had a very preliminary budget for next year, but did we have anything that we were planning to come out of that for next year?
It's all unallocated, so.
Okay, it's all unallocated, okay. And at least two of those properties are ghost-platted, right? So they would eventually someday, decades and generations down the line, when they decide to sell, those would, would that road get torn up?
Yeah, so the, the Meridian Fields, the, the Flag House-
Yep.
Those are ghost-platted. Um, we ghost-platted this, this parcel here, so it could connect. You can kind of see it in this picture. It looks like there's possibly three lots there. Um, the Hammers piece would, would have to happen later with the, with the development to the west, but.
But you're-
But the road would, at a certain point, much more in our future, it would not be needed beyond the road to the, the well?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, um, you wanna, go ahead.
Um, and so it's your belief that when the state receives our application for the logoed um railing on the, on the bridge, the, the state would look favorably, more favorably towards granting that than not, if we, if we do this?
Yeah, I, I, that's a tough one to, to, to say formally, because ultimately-
Right.
You can't say that this is a trade.
Right.
Yeah, cause I mean, they've got the rules on the one side and the rules on the other, and both of them have to, have to meet their thresholds.
Right.
Which is, what we'd have is, you know, the area, the area engineer advocating for approval of this based on prior precedents uh in other, in other cities.
Okay.
And that would, is usually a fairly loud voice in a permitting process to have an advocate in the area saying, another city got this approved, this should be approved here too. And that's as much as I could say with certainty would be the outcome, so.
Alright.
That feels a little better to me, cause it feels a little skeezy horse trading around, saying, we'll close this if you put that up for us.
I, I don't think that's, that's viable to suggest, that, that is, you know, really a lock. They, they're an agency, they have a different permit rep, they can say no. But the area engineer is advocating that, hey, there's precedence here.
Okay.
This is why this should be acceptable, and advocacy is a big deal within the state's system, is what I can say from over the years.
Okay. Will we go on? Okay.
Continue?
Sorry, we interrupted.
No, that's-
But I appreciate you taking the time to talk about that.
Yeah, thank you. We'll, we'll just keep going through it, and then we can come back to it-
Great, thank you.
Okay, so this is the Birmingham landscaping. As I mentioned before, this is to satisfy the, the uh noise, uh, noise study that was done with the preliminary plat. Um, so this is the end of the presentation. So there's, there's three um council actions before you, as I mentioned before. One is a resolution approving the final plat for Carver Preserve. Second is adopting the ordinance for rezoning of the property from Ag to R2. And then lastly, is approving and authorizing execution of the developer's agreement, subject to any changes as deemed necessary by the city attorney. So with that, I'm going to invite Mr. Matt Olson from Brandle Anderson. If you, if you wanna come up, Matt, and just, if there's any questions um for you specifically, uh, if you could answer those, and we can open it up to general discussion as well.
Hey, Matt, welcome.
Thank you. I can just say, I'm Matt with Brandle Anderson Homes in Carver Preserve LLC. We're the developer and builder.
Right. Uh, you wanna tell us a little bit more about what you've got planned in terms of homes?
Yeah, so this is gonna be a single-family home development for us, as you can see by the plat. Um, we have our set single-family homes. There's about five or six of them that we're planning on for this development, ranging from square footages of about twenty-eight hundred to probably low, low four thousands, and those are, including finished basements. That's one of the things that we've done um in the past, is, is finish our basements. Uh, most of these are two-story homes, uh, that will have four bedrooms up, uh, and then another bedroom down in the basement.
Price point estimate?
That's a moving target at the moment. Yeah, when we first looked at this development a couple of years ago, um, I was comfortable that we're at four fifty, um, right around there. That's gonna be good. Uh, things have changed quite a bit since then, and so that four fifty house is closer to five fifty now. Um, and- Um, and things are changing quite drastically with lumber prices coming down a little bit, so we'll, we'll see where we end up at. Uh, we're planning on thinking about a home as soon as we can and have that ready for the spring parade. Um, and it'll be interesting to see how things change from this point till then, and where, you know, prices are gonna be at. Um, you know, I gotta say, it'll probably still around that five-fifty to probably low-six-hundreds, if things stay the course where they're at. Um, now, we're gonna be changing things to make sure that we're building something that people can afford. We don't want to build it and not sell it, and so, um, we want to make sure that we're, um, meeting the market demand in product as well as in price.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
So, I think I mentioned this the last time that we saw this, um, the street names. So, is there a large stand of Tammerack that's up there?
I don't think we named them. I'm not sure who named, like, the streets or if our engineer did. Um, I just, yeah, I had no.
Can they still be changed at this point, the street names? Anyone?
I'm not sure. We had Mylars printed, and I'm not sure if, and signed, but I'm not sure if the street names are on the. The street names on the final plat? Are they are? Okay, alright. Might be a little difficult.
Okay, I just think, I brought this up the last time. I mean, we have the Preserve, right? I think that's a very neat name. We have that beautiful marsh, and Preserve Way or something like that might have been better, and I think we already have a Fulton. Don't we have a Fulton up here on Fourth Street? I thought we had a Fulton Road or something up here.
We do.
Fulton.
Yeah, so, just for confusion wise, now we have a Fulton that's in a different location in the city, so. So, are there ways to have the names changed, or where are we at?
They're city streets, so the city can choose what the streets are called. Uh, that would, I mean, it sounds like they have Mylars printed, which doesn't mean the plat can't be changed, the plat hasn't been approved yet, so. Um, you know, not to take anything away from MAP, but that's a risk they take when they print Mylars before the council approves. Um, a plat, so, yes, if the council wants, I mean, I know there are also typically rules about whether it's a street or a place or a way. Depending on the way the streets laid out, I don't know, these are things that I don't typically look at, but, um. You know, there is still leeway to change street names.
Fullerton.
It's Fullerton.
Okay. Safe with Fulton.
Yeah, I don't mind. Fulton's fine, as long as it's not Fullerton. Um, I don't know, I guess I'd prefer to, Tammerack doesn't. There's no meaning behind it, there's no anything. I just think Preserve Way or Preserve Road or something might be more appropriate.
Amorali.
Alright, I, but I am very serious about that I, I, the, the street names, I think, are important. They help identify our town and people that lived here, or, I mean, if you think of things that are named, we have Rescrap Road, there's, there's reasons that they were named that. So, but I do think because of the marsh being in the center, and it's a very unique, it's a very unique, um, development with that, that. And it's called the Preserve, having something to do with the Preserve might be a little bit more appropriate than Tammerack Road when there wasn't any Tammeracks there.
Any other council questions?
Um, I had a couple questions. So, that outlaw D and E that are on the west side of the property. Around Old Oak Road there, um, are those city or homeowners association maintained? I'm not sure. I found that in the developers' agreement.
Those are proposed to be HOA outlots.
Okay, so, nothing would change them to not be outlots as the property west has developed? Like, they're not gonna become a lot at some future point, correct?
They, they could.
They could, okay.
Right now, they're outlots, so they're not buildable.
Okay.
They could theoretically be sold by an HOA to the property to the west.
Okay, and then they could develop it into something else, okay?
Yeah, there's no restrictions on what can be done, uh, except for the fact that, as, if they're outlots, they can't be, can't get a, a building permit for an outlaw. It would have to be combined and planted with a.
Okay.
Separate development.
Okay, and then, can you describe for me what's happening, um, between, so in the northeast part of the property? That thick line between lots five and six that you show there, what is that?
This here?
Yes, what's that?
That's a, um, maintenance access route for the pond and filtration basin.
Okay, so is that like a paved road?
So, it's so Chad can maintain those ponds in the future.
Is it paved?
I do not believe it's paved.
Okay, so it's an easement?
It's, it's just a wider. Let me, let me pull up the, I can't remember if it's in it, if that outlaw goes out to the right of way or not. Maybe I'll just look at the plans a little quicker. Just a second, please. It's just a wider easement.
Okay, okay, thank you.
There's also Storm Sewer going through there, so there's wider easement for Storm Sewer.
Okay, thank you, that's all I needed.
Lori?
I just had a comment on the slide about pedestrian. I like that detail of the trail and the sidewalk. I think that all came together nicely.
Chris, anything else? No. Glenn?
Um, no, my questions were all answered.
Alright, um, I'll make a motion. Um, sorry. I do have a couple of questions. Um, so, and I'm, apologies if I missed this in the packet, but, uh. As far as the access on Monroe Drive, will there be any four-way stops this far west?
There, it's just a two-way stop proposed, so Monroe would have the through.
Okay.
Um, at this location.
And there's a certain threshold that traffic from sixty-six homes doesn't meet for a four-way stop?
No, this, Monroe is, is the, literally, the, are gonna be our main collector on the south side of two-twelve, so minimizing those. Those stop signs are gonna be very important, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, and the sightlines are, will be taken into account?
Mm-hmm.
For folks going.
Yep.
Um, alright, and then for the trail and the sidewalk, trail, city maintains, sidewalk, city maintains? As far as snow removal?
City maintained, yep.
Wait, can we repeat that? Trail is city, sidewalk.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, sorry, I was thinking trail. You said sidewalk and trail?
So, yeah.
The trail, it's, it's a city trail, so the city would be maintaining it. The sidewalks would be cleared by the homeowners. Yep.
Okay, yep, alright.
Thanks, Brent.
Um, yep, those, uh, those were my questions, alright. Go ahead, Lori.
I will make a motion to adopt Resolution one-thirty-three dash twenty-two, approving the final plat for residential development to be known as Carver Preserve.
We have a motion by council member Sayer.
I'll second that.
And a second by, uh, Glenn Henry. Uh, any further discussion? Um, I just wanted to pop back in if any other council members had any strong thoughts towards the naming of the streets? No, I don't.
I have no strong thoughts about it, but we can, I know that we changed Rescrap Way, um. Off of, uh, North Side by Fleet from there, and it wasn't that big a deal. Yeah, it was.
I wish we would have nipped that earlier.
Yeah, I mentioned it earlier, and I, it keeps coming back, looking the exact same.
So, I don't know if, like, Planning Commission needs to help us, or, I don't know, anyway.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Right.
Thank you.
Alright, that was one of three motions we need.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance, uh, zero-six, twenty-twenty-two, rezoning Carver Preserve property to R2.
I'll second. We have a motion by council member Henry and a second by council member Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
And I'll make a motion to approve the authorization execution of the developers' agreement for Carver Preserve. Subject to any changes deemed necessary by the city attorney.
We have a motion by council member Henry, a second, and a second by council member McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, alright. Welcome to Carver.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, alright, uh, city manager communications, Mr. Mayor.
Just give me a second, I'm gonna.
Yep.
Pump this up.
All the suspense.
I know.
Right. So, this is gonna take the, so this was designed for the work session, so we're gonna get a little weedy, um, and updates. This is the city manager's report. My computer kind of crashed here. Alright, so, the aforementioned two-twelve TCP bridge railing. Uh, so this is something that the council had previously, uh, discussed. Uh, so there is a, I think, I don't know if Dan has completed the application, but there is an application that MinDOT sent to us. Uh, related to this application. Uh, we were previously told, uh, when Bolton and Mc went out for this. That, uh, it was only allowed, uh, based on geography if the interchange or railing was in kind of the center of your city. And so, uh, because of where the location of, uh, the bridge and bridge railing is. Uh, the city engineering staff was told that this wasn't possible, and so, um, you know, I'm not sure how much. Uh, feedback the council has at this point, but this is what, this is what, uh, this is the design that, uh, we would be approaching MinDOT with. Related to the bridge railing.
Love it.
Great.
Yeah, it looks really good.
Can I ask a question? Is it both sides?
Dan, do you wanna get into that?
I have to get my bearings a little, so if you're.
Eastbound. That's because that's where the railing is. It'd be eastbound.
And it would face out because of the, the lettering, so it'd be, it would be the eastbound traffic on two-twelve that would see it. Um, as far as the Carver, they'd see the logo on both sides, correct?
Thank you.
Uh, then just wanted to, to let the council know that the, uh, pre-construction meeting for Ironwood Park is, I think it's Wednesday, is that correct? Yep, tomorrow. Um, uh, just following up on a code enforcement issue, uh, just because of the, kind of the significance of it. Giving the council an update, uh, the city applied for and obtained an administrative search warrant for two-sixteen Carver Creek Place. Uh, the building official conducted the inspection, and we're currently working with the city attorney on kind of investigating the findings of that. Inspection, and then we'll be, uh, taking whatever appropriate enforcement action is necessary. Um, Dave, do you have anything to add to that?
The, the, uh, intent at this point is to prepare a hazardous building order for the council to review and approve at a, at a su, a future meeting. Probably, uh, either the next meeting or the following. Um, we just obtained the, there's some video and photos. That were reviewed by the building official when he did the inspection, and that, that was sent, were sent over to my office, um, just to take a look at. But, um, this is, uh, that, the home that was started twenty, almost twenty years ago and never completed. And so, it's uninhabitable. Um, the building official is likely going to post it as, as such. So, nobody walks into it and hurts themselves. It's unlikely because it's secured, but, uh, at the same point, or, at the same time. It's still a hazardous structure, and it's not going anywhere. So, we're trying to finally, uh, um, address it. And hopefully, get to the point of either requiring the property owner to complete the construction, or to demo it. And, or sell it, or get it into the hands of somebody who could use that property for something productive, rather than just, uh, you know. One-third of a completed home that's been, you know, deteriorating over time, frankly. So, you'll, you'll hear more about this soon.
Uh, then, uh, the mayor and I attended a fire relief association meeting last week where the, uh. So, the fire relief is essentially the pension arm of the fire department, uh, but there are separate board, um, outside of kind of this. City's purview, um, this kind of arms-length, and they are interested in an increase in their pension. We've traditionally been doing a hundred-dollar increase, and they wanted to do more. And there was some conversation related to, well, what the impact of that might be, and some of you might remember, maybe about four or five years ago. We did a benefit impact study where ABDO did kind of some calculations based on the amount. And so, they had a kind of a number in mind, but it was just kind of based on kind of, I would say rounding the number to make, um, even. And so, um, with Lynn's help, we're gonna, Lynn's gonna do some research on what our peer Citigroup uses, uses for benefits. So, you know, we've done that for salaries and water rates, um, and get that information, rather than just choosing an arbitrary number. That, you know, twenty-seven-hundred or twenty-seven-fifty, and then switch over rather to, rather than doing, uh, a level amount of a hundred dollars. To do a percentage-based increase, um, because, you know, a hundred-dollar increase has been going on for probably nearly a decade. And so, every year when you add a hundred, the, the actual increase by percentage-wise is, you know, is reduced. And so, I just want to take a kind of a big-picture approach to this. Uh, the Relief Association has agreed to pay, uh, for half of the study. There's some scope things that we need to, to look at, but it's probably in the neighborhood of, I think, three thousand dollars for the study. So, some additional information on that in the coming months to share with the council.
Can I ask you a question on that, Brent?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, if you retire ten years, like, if you retired ten years ago, and so, if the person who retires today makes this much. Or they get this hundred-dollar, I shouldn't say they, they get this hundred-dollar, you know, we raise it. Does that retroact, and does the person who is still getting relief from that get an additional one hundred dollars, too?
Does.
Or are you, you stuck at where you're at?
Yeah, you, I'd have to verify this, but my understanding is that you are eligible for the relief amount. Um, at the date of your retirement.
Okay.
And then that goes on. Uh, but there isn't a retroactive.
Right.
For the folks that have since retired, it's, and so that's where the calculations come in, 'cause the, ABDO will have to go through our employee roster. And look at, you know, who would retire at certain times and, and try to do some calculations.
If you raise it by three percent for the people who are yet to retire, the people who have retired don't see a three percent.
Correct. Uh, and then following up, uh, you know, council member, uh, McKnight and Sayer were not at the last council meeting. And we had some, we had a community comment related to, uh, two residents, uh, presented to the council related to reducing, uh, citywide speed limits. Or specifically Green Ash in their instance, and council member Mock had indicated some interest in getting some more research. And I just want, with all five of you here, get an idea of what kind of scope you'd want to see for that, 'cause there's a wide variety of things. That, uh, cities have done, and so, we can do kind of what amounts to be a literature review, or, you know. We can go to Victoria, and I think it was Edina and, uh, Madam Edi, and kind of show you their documents. Or there's a full-scale, like, as in research, as in having Bolton and Mc do a study of, like, your streets. 'Cause, you know, based on, I'm speak, speaking a little bit over my skis here, but if, you know, if you want to reduce speeds to a certain level. Then an engineering study is required. I think that's what Minneapolis and St. Paul might have done, where they reduce their speeds from thirty to twenty. But, you know, there's a lot of ways that you can go, um, and the council, you know, didn't talk about it as a group. So, I just wanted to get some kind of feedback before, uh, we started dedicating a significant amount of time, or whatever amount of time that you wanted to see. Invested in this.
Yep, since I was the one who pushed for, I'll just say what my vision was, and then the rest of the council will work from there. Uh, mine was not to get an engineering firm involved in, in, you know, a large study. Mine was saying, again, more on the, opening the book and looking around at communities that are our size, and then looking at communities that are, that we know have reduced them. And to what, what and why, you know, maybe it's a phone call then to say, okay, so, you, you lowered it, here's why. Um, but nothing, again, not going down the road of a full-on study, but just wanting to know a little more information of the, the, the what and why. Um, what's the speed they went to? What was their emphasis for to go into that route? And to me, I think that's just the, the stepping stone I wanted to see.
I like that stepping stone.
I agree also. The one thing that I am interested still learning is, for some of those cities, did they do it citywide? Or just certain streets, and then kind of the what and why, like, what street and why?
I don't have any objections to.
No, I mean, objections as to doing a little bit of research into it, but let's just.
Look, I just said that.
Well, I just want to keep things in perspective of what, um, what the purpose, the, what started this whole conversation. Was an area of Carver that, uh, we had dedicated a lot of, uh, resources of the. was an area of Carver that, uh, we had dedicated a lot of, uh, resources of the sheriff's office to, that when we found out there wasn't a problem of speeding, whereas, why do we want to create something where if there's not, they're not speeding now, even if they go to the said twenty-five that they wanna reduce it to, there would still have been two tickets that could have potentially been given, but still nobody was still doing thirty miles an hour in a thirty mile an hour zone, so let's keep that in mind before we dive in to take on, um, possibly changing everything in Carver.
Point well taken.
Point taken.
I also think, um, we need to keep in mind, you know, like, the hardest part of this job for every single one of us sitting up here is doing the most good for the most amount of people, we have heard from three people on this, and we have six thousand people in the city of Carver, so.
Not yet.
Um. I mean, not officially, but I'm pretty sure, fifty-eight hundred, so, um, I also wanna keep that in mind too, the scope.
Yep.
Yep.
So I don't wanna see anybody dedicated full-time to this, but it'd be good to hear what they're doing in communities next.
Sure. Then, uh, there's been quite a bit of activity at City Hall related to kind of resident reach-outs regarding, um, MetroNet's kind of construction, and I think they started primarily in the Carver Bluffs neighborhood, um, so, we've established, uh, some good communications with MetroNet, so I think that the thing that folks, um, intuitively are thinking is that this is a city project, and so they, I think in some instances, not all, but some, folks were looking for the city to, like, do a, kind of a residential construction flyer like we do for our city street projects, and, uh, MetroNet sent out a letter, they sent out a postcard, they've done yard signs, and I think sometimes folks inadvertently, who aren't familiar with MetroNet or that brand, probably threw that out, or it appears they might have, and so, uh, we have links on our website that get folks to MetroNet's construction page where they can, um, talk about, you know, reach out and tell them about sprinkler systems or underground dog fence, um, but I think that'll, it'll be an ongoing challenge as we go from neighborhood to neighborhood, because, you know, uh, private utility construction can be, um, a challenging project for a neighborhood, and it's, um, you know, it's like CenterPoint or XL doing a project, we're not kind of managing the day-to-day, and so there's maybe different levels of expectations. Uh, I would say that, you know, um, and I don't have a lot of contact with private utilities, but MetroNet has done a really good job, at least from my perspective, of communicating, um, they're really available, they have really good systems in place, and so, um, I'm confident that there is, if there is an issue, they're gonna be able to follow up, um, so, I don't, if there's any questions about that, though, I think the one thing that they are doing is they're, you know, they're not open trenching, so they're kind of potholing and then directional drill, drilling, so they're not, you're not gonna just see this big row of, you know, under, open earth trench, um, going through neighborhoods, so hopefully that causes a little less disruption to neighborhoods.
I do also wanna say for, um, the, the MetroNet people that are on-site doing the work, they have been really open to talking to residents, you know, as they've had questions and stuff like that, and all the feedback has been positive, that the MetroNet people are really nice, and they explain what they're doing, and, you know, all of that sort of stuff too, so, not just in their other communication, but in their teams that are in the neighborhood.
And then the last one I have, it's, it's kind of difficult to explain, so I kind of created this picture here, or, um, figure drawing, as the engineers like to say, um, so, several decades ago, I, I wanna say early nineties, uh, Dietrich and Janet Lenzin or Dick Lenzin, the, the lot which you see kind of on the, kind of the far right of your screen, uh, they got permission from, uh, the city council to construct a driveway in, uh, what would be a platted section of Walnut Drive, and so Walnut Drive is not improved as a full-city street, but the city at that time gave, uh, the Lenzins permission to construct a driveway, uh, within that right-of-way, um, to access their home. Uh, you can see the, the lot to, to the left of the drawing, or to the north, I'll, I'll call it, also uses that driveway. How this pertains to the council and the here and now is the, the lot highlighted in yellow is for sale, and so we're working with the, a real estate agent who's, um, representing that property, they want to develop it, build a home, and so we're coordinating a meeting, 'cause essentially, um, in order for the, uh, lot outlined in yellow to gain access, they need to work out a driveway access agreement with, uh, the Lenzins and the, I think I believe it's the Hunt family or the home property owner to the north of the Lenzins for access to that, um, and Dave, you can follow up if I miss on anything here, but ultimately, if they can't work out an agreement, we'd have to, uh, start some type of process or proceeding, uh, where that road may have to be improved at the cost of the developer, um, which is obviously more expensive than, uh, working out a driveway, uh, access agreement, but ultimately, I'll, this is kind of a unique, um, decision that was made at the time, and so we're just trying to kind of untangle that, uh, web and get the, uh, connected parties, um, in a room and trying to coordinate a solution for them, so just a update on that, did I miss anything here, Dave?
No, I think if anyone's saying, you know, what's the benefit to that property out there to enter into some kind of a share driveway agreement? Well, it's because the alternative, the alternative, um, is that the city comes in and builds a street, and that's, you know, not as private, it's, could potentially cost you money, um, and that kind of a thing, so, this isn't out of the ordinary, uh, or at least it's, it's, it's not common, but it happens in communities where cities allow somebody to build a private driveway over a right-of-way that's unimproved, um, but usually there's a little more done on the front end to make it more feasible when stuff like this happens down the road. I don't know what led up to the decision in nineteen, I think it was eighty-nine, for all this, uh, unfold the way it is, but that's where we're at, so, um, I think we need to let it play out with the Realtor and the property owners and see, you know, what assistance the city can provide, and ultimately, if we get to the point of having to, um, you know, think about options to extend public roadway through there, we can do that, but I think for a number of reasons, that's not ideal, so.
So Walnut Street, that small section, is a private street?
Correct.
And then the rest.
Well, it's basically a private driveway, built within a public right-of-way.
Okay, so, all of Walnut Street is essentially a?
Driveway.
Okay.
It, it was vacated, you can see where it stops here, everything southeast of here was vacated, so it does dead-end there. This is public right-of-way, but it's unimproved, so there's no city street through there, the person and the, the two homeowners are using that dedicated right-of-way as just their own private driveway.
Okay, and you're bringing it up because there may be conflicts that we would have to get involved in?
Uh, bring it up 'cause the, so the lot in yellow was previously owned, I think it was Eve Reed.
Yeah.
And she had passed, and so the lot is, uh, being sold off, and so, um, the only way for them to get access at this point is by kind of going back into nineteen eighty-nine and working out this driveway agreement, the reason I bring it up is 'cause if, if an agreement can't be reached, it'll get to the council of, you know, they'll want access, we're talking public street, we're talking, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and maybe some aggrieved parties, and so just giving you kind of the heads-up, like, we wanna resolve this, but this is unique, and I can't, it'd be hard to kind of try to summarize this in two or three sentences.
I wanted to say about this, that I am, I'm actually kind of excited to see this, because there isn't any new development that happens in this, you know, pre-developed area, so I think it's kind of exciting, um, yeah, there's a few things to work out, have, have they, or will there be talks to about vacating any part of that additionally, so that it splits to those lots, or we don't, we're not there yet?
Yeah, so that would be a problem, because if the city vacated Walnut here, this half would go to.
No, no, not all of it, just once we get down to where it's already vacated.
Oh, yeah, potentially, yeah, if we got to that point, if it wasn't necessary, absolutely, that could make sense.
We do have, we do have, uh, utilities, so, um, depending about how, uh, long they go into the right-of-way, we might have to keep the whole thing.
Okay.
Just because of the sanit- sanitary and sewer and water lines in there.
I was just curious, but yeah, I hope they get it worked out, 'cause I'll be kind of need to have something in there.
I have two, which I think are quick questions, so the lot highlighted in yellow, would that be considered landlocked?
No, I mean, right now it has access to public right-of-way, it's just the, uh, alleyways, you can see there's a garage built into it, and so, and because it's been there for so long, at least according to the city attorney, I think the city would have a challenge in trying to get that moved out of the alleyway, um, but it has, it ha- it's not landlocked because it does have access to public right-of-way, since it hasn't been improved immediately adjacent to its boundaries.
Okay, and then the two old homes that use Walnut Street as a private drive, um, are they city sewer and water, do we know?
Yes. Yep.
So they don't have their own well, they already have?
Correct.
So are we looking at vacating that easement, that alley easement then, or just leaving that? I mean, I know what would, that garage thing would still be an issue, 'cause it's half and half, but.
I, I would say for now, that's to be determined, I think if we get to the point where they're accessing it from Walnut, this new, this yellow parcel, there's probably little need for that alley, and you could look at, at vacating it, um.
With the exception of the garage.
The problem is the garage is split in two.
Yeah, that, that's the issue, and there's, there's a history with that garage too, um, it's not worth getting into it, but, um.
We don't have to then, well, it's political.
I think, to answer your questions about vacation, I think there are potentials to vacate portions of these areas, but it's, we're kind of waiting to see what happens, and then if staff recommends that, you'll see a, probably a vacation proceedings coming in the future, but.
So that's kind of the laundry list, happy to answer any questions, or give updates on any topics that I may have missed that you're looking for updates on.
Anything else for Brent?
Nope.
Alright, Joy, any updates?
Uh, no.
Lori?
Uh, I do, I, um, I worked with, um, other council and staff to attend the League of Minnesota's annual convention. Um, I did a smaller convention about three years ago, so a couple takeaways was, um, that I really appreciate that, as a city, we have that in the budget. And then my, um, big takeaway is, it hasn't heard me for over three and a half years, I always wanna know who our peer cities are, who are, and I've really learned that there is not just one, you know, it's, it's just so dynamic, and it's just kind of eye-opening to, to, for me to, like, let go of that and, like, find different areas that we might have similarities and challenges, but, um, yeah, so there was just a lot of good sessions, so, that was, uh, we're very well with it, so that's my update.
Kristin?
I don't have anything.
I have nothing.
Alright, um, keeping with the league conference theme, um, it was a really good conference, the league always puts on really good conferences, if you guys have never been, I highly recommend, highly, highly, highly recommend you participate in some of their programs, and you can, they've got a lot of virtual options too, that you don't even have to leave home for, uh, but Lori and Vicki and I sat together at breakfast one morning, and we kind of divided and conquered, so that we didn't have all three of us at any one session to try to get the most bang for our buck out of this experience, um, and the sessions that I attended were on public engagement, orchestrating challenging encounters, and growing cultural agility, um, Brent already mentioned the, the Carver Fire Relief meeting that we had last week, um, let's see, there, I volunteered last Thursday, the, um, Carver County Public Health and the school district, um, and a bunch of other partners, um, all of who I am forgetting right now, are teaming up to do a mobile food distribution, that's really centered on kid-friendly meals. The idea is to bridge the missing meal gap from all of that free funding that was kind of COVID area, if you, era, if you will, um, so, that's gonna take place until September first, on Thursdays from three until five o'clock, down at the Public Utilities Building right here downtown.
Courtney, who's behind that, like, who's?
It's Carver County Public Health.
Okay.
The school district, a Better Foundation, a Better Day Foundation, and, eh, there's a website that I shared on my Facebook page, and there's some postings on the Carver Life Facebook page on it too.
Are they accepting, like, food donations also at the time, or is everything just sort of set, and that's all they wanna do at that moment?
No, they'll accept both food and monetary donations, um, they're not putting out a cry, or a call for food donations, because they're partnering with Second Harvest, and, so for example, last week, there were twelve hundred pounds of food, and the price for that through Second Harvest, because of the relationships that they have in the contracts, was three hundred dollars, so, a garage bay full of food, fresh vegetables, milk, eggs, meat, for three hundred dollars, and we all know that, like, three hundred dollars would get each of us exactly.
A cart, just one cart.
Yeah, like, one bag out of our, the grocery store of our choice, so, um, yeah. Okay, um, let's see, the farmer's market begins next Tuesday, Carver Station this year, from three to six P.M., super excited about that. Um, on our consent agenda tonight, we appointed the judges, um, election judges for the primary election, so always thankful for those folks who volunteer to participate in that, um, and then on just a slight personal note, I connected with Aaron Smith last week, and got to kick the tires on little baby Lucy, which is just absolutely adorable, so, um, that is it for me. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn, if we don't have anything else.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
My motion by Councilmember Mock.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Henry, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion passes, good evening.